Kevin Proto here with Locals Supporting Locals for another Heartbeat of the Okanagan, coming to you from very beautiful Penticton, BC. And we just wrapped up here at City Hall for what was a special meeting in regards to the Arena Task Force, whether to build a new one, update the existing one. And we don't know, like, for myself personally, I can't make any comments on it. I don't know enough of the details. The one thing I do know, that it is a very costly project, $33 million. So what we like to do with Locals Supporting Locals is come down to important issues such as this, and record it all in full, have it raw, unedited, and put it out to the public so you can see exactly what was said. And it's not always in your local newspapers, the whole thing that took place, you just get to that, right? So this way, you can share the video. I mean, at the same time, you can go to the city's website and view the council meetings, they are documented. I still like to have them for myself and for Locals Supporting Locals here. So by all means, view it. It's not that long, and was very informative. I gotta admit, the new arenas do sound great, but again, $33 million.
Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special council meeting here for July 25th. I'll call this meeting to order if I can. Council, we do have an agenda, two items on it, looking for adoption of agenda, moving seconded on favor, we have an agenda. First thing under staff reports is FCM grant application for condition risk assessment. Mr. Rosiek.
Good evening, Your Worship. The Federation of Canadian Municipalities has a program to aid municipalities in funding asset management initiatives. And staff would like to pursue a risk assessment of our linear infrastructure assets and our vertical infrastructure assets. And this will allow staff to make better informed decisions with respect to when we replace our assets. It will not only be based on the amount of time typically left in our system, but we will consider, well, what is the risk if we do or don't replace a particular item? We undertook some work in our wastewater and water treatment plans already in this regard, and we have found that it has indeed saved us money by looking at the risks side of things. So we would like to pursue with the rest of our linear vertical infrastructure. There is a six-part work plan that's included in your council package, and the value of the work is estimated at $62,500. And the grant will fund up to $50,000, and the city would have to make up the remaining $2,500. So it is a good investment, and FCM is actually very keen to work with municipalities to help them solve their asset management problems. So what we would like to do is seek direction from council to apply for the grant, and to commit to the activities that are outlined in the Urban Systems Work Plan, and commit $12,500 from surplus towards the initiative to be successful with the grant, and to authorize myself and the Chief Financial Officer assigning me the required grant process.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Rosiek. Comments, questions, direction? Cost Martin? All those staff recommendations, seconded. This was projects, will this, after the study, will be able to sort of narrow down our infrastructure deficit, so we have a bit more of a concrete number? Right now, we've thrown the high realm of that sphere. Will this study sort of be able to point it down, so it's gonna be X?
We're working on various initiatives in that regard, and it is our intention, once we complete all of those which we're anticipating will be sometime late this year or the next year, to come back to council with a completely updated asset management picture. Will it reduce them? That is indeed the goal, is to do that, and that's what we've been working towards doing. But when we bring it back to council, we'll be in a position really to present to you really the best information that we will have available. Anything beyond that will be minor tweaking, but I mean, we've spent a lot of effort trying to update information we have, adjust service lives and make them longer where we can. We're now starting to bring in the risk side of the equation to actually increase service lives even more. Every time you increase the service life, there is, what you end up doing is reducing how much you have to spend on your annual asset replacement plan. So that is indeed the goal. And we did talk about bringing it to council piece by piece by piece, but we thought it would be a better approach to finish all of the work and then bring it to his own package, and that's what we're working on.
Anyone else? Questions? So staff recommendation is to support the application, the support to apply for a grant of $62,000, and make up the difference of whatever FCM doesn't approve, which associated here is $12,500. I'll call the question on favor. Anyone who wants to pose that was unanimous. Second item on the agenda is the Arena Task Force recommendation on grant application. Mr. Kozak, ten, one of his plaid and Mr. Leavittman?
Good evening, Your Worship and Council. The intent of today's meeting is to provide a summary of work completed by the Arena Task Force in preparation for a recommendation for the city's arena solutions. We'd like to share the task force preferred option for the grant application, and we're seeking direction from council today for the grant application and the next phases of work. And before I get into it, I just wanted to introduce some of the task force members that are here tonight. Of course, Stuart has been here a couple times presenting, he's been here for our task force, and has done an amazing job and spent a lot of time and effort working with us. Mike Hopkins, who's been our communications liaison. And, do you guys just wanna raise your hands? So Mike Hopkins is our adult league, adult hockey league representative. Bruce Millington is a community representative. Frank Rieger, community representative. Lori Mullin, Parks and Recreation Manager. Andy Oaks, OHG representative. And who else? We have Trevor, playing carry figure skating. And Ryan Schultz, community representative. I think I got everybody. So there's seven more members that aren't here tonight, but with that, I'll get going So early on in the process, starting in January, actually is when the committee got together, and we prepared a timeline of how we were gonna come to the final recommendation. And at that time, we had originally thought by the end of June, and shortly after that, we pushed it to the end of July. It was an aggressive timeline, and we had a lot of work to do in that, in the seven months. And we didn't have the grant opportunity on our radar at the beginning stages, but it became a priority for the task force after requesting council direction and receiving approval to pursue the strategic priorities fund grant application, and that was approved at the May 23 council meeting. So since that time, we continue to work on the arena options analysis for both existing facilities and the new arena options. And we submitted the SPF grant application by the June 1 deadline, indicating to the grant administrators that we would like to issue an addendum once we had a confirmed direction and a recommendation to proceed with the arena solutions. So they accepted that, and they advised us that we need to submit our addendum by July 31st in order to get the full application in time for the review process, and that's why we're here today. So the process we followed was fairly central, but there was a lot of work involved behind all of these steps. We studied the existing facilities, McLaren and Memorial Arena, in more detail, and we prepared upgraded options with five, 10, and 20-plus year investment opportunities. And we prepared preliminary costing and needs to new arena development on the SOEC site. We went out to the community and gathered feedback throughout the process in a variety of venues, and this started early on. We attended these games, various arena events throughout the winter season and spring season, open houses, we had online and paper surveys, community markets, and several meetings, and we reached out to over 500 or 600 people, maybe more than that. And then through the studies, the detailed analysis, and then the feedback that we got from the community, the task force narrowed down the various building facility options to five scenarios. And of course, we had to evaluate those scenarios to come up with a recommendation, so we prepared an evaluation matrix and scored each option against predetermined evaluation criteria. And the Arena Task Force recommendation was, the final recommendation that we have here today, is based on the option of the highest overall score and the majority of votes. So we ended up evaluating six options. We initially had five on the table, and then at the July 17th task force meeting, one of the task members requested the addition of the sixth option, which I just highlighted in orange there, so you can see what that option was. I'll just briefly go through these, we did go through these in our last council update last week. But option one includes decommissioning of McLaren, upgrading Memorial to regulation ice, and a new single pad arena with a capital cost of about $30 million and about $1 million annual operating costs. Option two involved upgrading of McLaren, modernizing Memorial, and no new build. This was about a 20, almost a $23 million option with $900,000 annual operating cost. This one, just in terms of the notes on this one, it does not provide a fourth regulation size ice surface, and there's less value for money from reinvestment in the aging facilities. Option three has a capital cost of $34 million, just over $1 million annual operating costs, and includes decommissioning McLaren, converting Memorial to dry surface, and then building a new twin pad arena on the SOEC site. And this option offers replacement of aging facilities and provides an additional dedicated drive floor facility. Option four includes the decommissioning of McLaren, modernizing Memorial, and construction of a new single pad arena on the SOEC site. It's about a 30, almost $37 million capital cost and just over $1 million operating annually. And it does not, this option didn't offer additional dedicated drive floor use, and it fails to achieve operating savings of a twin facility. I should just note too, that in terms of the annual operating costs, these are total costs of all of the facilities that you see here, as well as the Okanagan Hockey Training Center is included in these annual operating costs, so these are not incremental to what we have now for our operating costs. And as we see, the event center operating costs are not included in this analysis. Option five includes the decommissioning of McLaren and Memorial and construction of a new twin pad facility, so very similar to option three, but it does not provide dedicated drive floor use, and it's about $31 million and $940,000 annual operating. And then the final option, six, has a capital cost of almost $28 million, 1.25 million annual operating, and it includes upgrade of McLaren, converting Memorial to dry floor, and build out of a new single surface on the SOEC site. This one also does not, is not able to provide the fourth regulation size ice, and again, with the new single pad, you don't get the operating savings of the twin pad facility. So we did do a very high-level rudimentary net present value analysis, so we looked at lifecycle costing of each of these options. It was very high-level, as you'll see as I go through the presentation, part of the next phase of work, we get to get into more details on the NPV of the preferred option. But it does give us a good comparison of what the overall operating cost would be for a facility over 25 years. And you can see in this chart that the capital cost option for option five, although it's $31 million, which is the third highest, it's got the lowest operating costs. So with the total capital and operating costs that's discounted over 25 years, you can see that it changes, it's not just the capital cost that we're looking at, it's the operating costs as well. But this isn't necessarily, this isn't detailed information, because we haven't been able to account for things like additional revenues associated with each opportunity, or additional resource efficiencies by providing all the facilities on one site, what have you, so we definitely need to get into more details in the next phase of work. In terms of the valuation criteria, we had four categories that we used to evaluate the options, and we had several considerations within each criteria. The first one was the ability for each option to meet the user group needs, and that's the vision that was set out by the task force early on. That includes four regulation size surfaces, which would enable a multi-use facility, adequate spectator seating, so we're not building a big event center, this is modest spectator seating for about 200 to 400. We confirmed the number of dressing rooms and sizes, multi-use functional spaces, dry land and warm-up areas, and consideration to be located at SOEC site for tournaments and sports marketing and sports tourism. The second set of evaluation criteria related to providing value for taxpayers. So value is not just only the cost of the option, but also the relative benefits and the longevity of the solution. We did also, like I mentioned, look at operating costs, efficiencies, if the option is able to accommodate growth, and the ability to maximize use and revenues. The third criteria that was measured against was the ability to offer funding potential for each option, so this would include different types of grants, private donations, naming rights, and debt financing, like the casino revenue is an example. And in terms of the grants, we know it's, the different options may have different opportunities for getting those kinds of funding, like we know that the SPF funding is more likely to be successful with a new build, because their main objectives are to evidence environmental benefits, sustainability, productivity, and efficiencies in operations, so there are different levels of ability to get funding for the different options. We've also had some interest in private donations, again, something that's more likely to be supported with a new build rather than a investment into our existing facilities. And our last evaluation criteria was how each option would be able to achieve community support. So this was an important criteria for us, because we wanted to make sure that community feedback was considered. We didn't want to go ahead with an option that received no support from the community. So things that we considered there, these are actually what we heard from the community in their listing order of priority, so providing facilities for a wide range of user groups remain affordable, investing wisely over the life of the building, attracting young families in our city, promoting healthy lifestyle, preserving Memorial Arena for its history, generating economic activity for the city, and avoiding loss of surface time during repairs or construction. So based on the scoring, option three was scored the highest. It was a pretty clear winner. The next closest option was option four, so out of a total score of 240 points, we had 12 Arena Task Force members at the meeting that were involved in the scoring. So out of a total of 240 points, option three received 195 points. And the next highest option was option four at 154, option five just slightly behind that at 151. And then option two was the lowest scoring option at only 117 points. So just to describe this option three in a little bit more detail, this involves keeping our two existing arenas operational until a new twin pad arena is operating. And after a new twin pad arena is built, we would be, the intent is to decommission McLaren and convert Memorial to dry surface use, and that could be used for lots of different user groups across pickleball, tennis, soccer, and possibly others as well. I just wanna make a note that this isn't a plan that's gonna happen overnight, this is, this is the start of the process, and it's gonna take a long time to accomplish. But we are fortunate to have started this process early. We've seen some communities where they waited too long, and their arenas either the system failed, or a roof failed, or had to be shut down for safety reasons. So our goal is to avoid that type of situation, so it's great that we started on this early. And we are able to keep both facilities operational until such time that a final direction is confirmed. In terms of the location of the placement of the twin pad arena, we did explore a couple of different options. You can see it here, located on the west side of the site, and the reason for that, there's multiple reasons. We wanted to position it away from the casino, where all the current hotspots are for traffic and circulation and parking. This would also help make use of the parking lots that are west of Alberni. Those are, during an event, all the parking around there, we realize is heavily used. But on a day-to-day basis, those western parking lots are pretty much empty, and so for the day-to-day use for those arenas, they'd be able to use those parking lots across the street. We do have a million allowed in the new, in the project budget, or in the estimates for the new arenas, to allow for some sort of parking solutions. We don't know what those are yet, but they would have to be considered in the next phase of work. Another benefit to the location of this arena is that it's a little bit easier for site servicing than some of the other options we looked at. The front doors of the arena would be placed along the same frontage as the SOEC and Training Center, which makes it easier for site navigation and traffic flow and circulation. Adjacencies to existing buildings and creating synergies between the new arenas and the existing SOEC was considered as well. And it also offers opportunity for a second floor office space at the new facility, which could possibly have a connection to the upper concourse of the SOEC, again, something that has to be explored in more detail. In terms of the arena layout itself for the new twin pad, it includes, it's pretty much a mirrored, each side is mirrored from one another, so we have about 100 capacity for about 100 baby spectators per side, six dressing rooms per side, a total of 12, and then shared services for concessions, skate rentals, lobbies, storage, ice plant, and building services. And as I mentioned, it also allows for office space development above the front, above the dressing rooms and the lobby area. That's not currently in the project budget, but we have formally received intent from DC Hockey that they would like to discuss with us a possible relocation to Penticton, and that could be accommodated in a new build. So it's not in the project estimates at this point in time, but it's something that we would have to consider and develop a business case for, if that's something that we wanted to explore with. And another key feature is, it does allow an option to build a single surface first, if that's all the funding commits at this point, and then add on to the facility at a point down the road, so you can construct it in phases, however you do lose a lot of efficiencies and cost savings by doing that. So in terms of how our, the recommended option meets the predetermined criteria, I'm just gonna go through a few slides here. The ability to meet user group needs. The advantages of option three is that it sustains current programming and services, it meets the functional program requirements, it accommodates a dedicated drive floor use facility, there's no operational downtime, so no services or programs lost, and a location provides opportunities for sports tourism. And the cons that we've identified is that a new facility may make the pressure on affordability for user groups. Providing good value to taxpayers, we felt that option number three has the longest life expectancy overall, it minimizes the risk of unanticipated costs with renovating an aging facility, has the greatest opportunity for increased revenue, ability to accommodate tenants like DC Hockey, it addresses $17 million of infrastructure deficits, provides more opportunities for year-round use and opportunuses. The intent would be that facilities would all have summer ice systems, so you could have dry floor or some for ice in your facilities at any point in time, which we're limited with at McLaren right now. And this option is also aligned with current industry best practices for arena facility design. Con is the addition of drive floor surface, a dedicated facility increases the capital and operating costs. So it was estimated about $200,000 in operating costs to run a drive floor facility in Memorial. That does not consider the revenues that would be generated though. In terms of funding potential, option three most closely aligns with the grant criteria, related to productivity, economic growth, and sustainability. We have high potential for matching funds from private donors and high potential to source naming rates. And again, the con, similar to the last criteria, the addition of the drive floor surface increases capital and operating costs, which would increase the need for funding. And finally, the last criteria, the ability to achieve community support. This option serves a wide range of user groups, it provides facilities that attract and keep young families, we are able to preserve the history of Memorial Arena, there's opportunity for more tournaments and sports tourism, of having all facilities on one site, and having regulation sized surfaces, and allows the ability to keep existing surfaces operational while we implement the project. And however, this does add facility SOEC, which would increase activity and parking pressures, and we heard a lot about that when we talked to the community, they wanted to make sure that we address parking and circulation through the city. So there is some other considerations that warrant some further discussion, and these came up through community feedback and just discussions with the task force. In terms of the financial implications, so there's been a few questions about the level and their accuracy of the estimates, so these are currently Class D estimates, they have an accuracy range of plus minus 25%. And this is a range of accuracy that's industry standard and appropriate to compare options for decision-making purposes. We don't have enough information yet to establish our project budget, so these are estimates to compare against one another, not to establish a project budget at this point, we have to do further work and refine the estimates more accurately. The net present value and the lifecycle costing needs more analysis, and we heard this again from the task force and from the community, so we need to look at things like refining the capital costs, operational costs, looking at the revenue opportunities associated with the twin pad, and a dedicated drive floor facility, additional tournament hosting, et cetera. And if we get direction to proceed in a certain way, after, you know, once we get into schematic design, or even pre-designed schematic design, there's a whole nother cycle of lifecycle costing that would happen in terms of the actual building systems, that would be considered for the facility. And of course, we need to confirm funding opportunities and refer back to council before we need to implement any of the solutions. And I just wanna make it really clear that we don't have available funding right now for any of the options that were identified by the task force, and we require further exploration to refer back to council. But hopefully, with the direction in place tonight, we can start developing a funding strategy, including the types and amounts of funding opportunities, as well as timelines for when those funds will become available. It's really difficult to develop a funding strategy if we don't have a direction. On community engagement, we heard loud and clear that more information and consultation is needed on the ultimate impact to taxpayers before a final decision is made. We've heard from a lot of residents that they fear that no money, no money will be left for other community needs, like performing arts, sports groups, parks and rec, master plan, et cetera. And again, the issue about parking activity level at SOEC, we want to see that addressed. Now, these are considerations that came up through the task force process and through engagement, but they're not only exclusive to the Arena Task Force, some of these situations were already in place before the task force became involved, and these are broader issues that would involve several city departments and staff to address. And on the Arena Task Force itself, the members did indicate, some members indicated that, you know, they felt rushed to make a decision based on the grant timeline, and they had desire and request for more information specifically regarding financials. There was some questions and scrutiny about the booking practices and rental rates, and opportunities to maximize revenues and use, is something that we need to look at as part of the financial analysis in the next phase of work. But the Arena Task Force, they had four key items in their mandate, and it's being completed. And I guess I just wanna take this time to thank the task force for spending a lot of effort and a lot of hours working on this for the last seven months. And I really have to say, our task force is led by, is so well-led by Stuart, and the whole group is so professional and respectful throughout the process, and everyone has different opinions, but they're able to speak about them, they're not scared to have those conversations around the table, people are willing to listen, and I think we came off, we came out of it with a very successful conclusion, so I know, I can speak for myself, and Joanne, I'm sure too, that we couldn't have done this without the task force, so thank you, everybody. I should also mention too, that there was, at the last meeting, some interest expressed in possibly extending the mandate of the Arena Task Force into the next phases of work. So that's something that Joanne and I would love to see, but it really depends on the availability and interest of the task force, and so we have a little bit more work to do to type those in there, but that's something that we might need to address going forward as well. So as I mentioned, this is just the start of a lengthy process, this is not the final direction, we're not asking for approval of $33 million today, by all means, no more work is required, but what we've done to date does allow us to complete the grant application by July 31st, if we're able to receive a grant. grant application by July 31st if we're able to receive a direction tonight. And I've had a lot of questions about the grant and what that means. So I just wanted to, you know, clarify that a little bit. The grant is part of the funding strategy. There will be many other items in the funding strategy, including possibly other grants. So what happens if we don't get the grant? Well, we still keep working on funding strategies and we keep our eye out for future grants. This was the second intake of the SPF grant. Of course, one was in 2015, so there could be more coming up. And there's always different types of grants available as well, something that we would keep an eye on. And a grant does not require us to make a financial commitment at this point. We have the ability to decline the grant if we find out that our funding opportunities can't support it. We can alter our direction if, even throughout the course of the project, it may be, as long as we keep close contact with the ministry, the ministries of the grant throughout the process. And we, the grant money does not have to be spent until 2023, so we have some time. And in terms of the next steps, in order to fully develop the proposed plan, we need to figure out the funding and financial details, additional analysis of operational capital costs, further consideration of the dry use potential for Memorial. We need to assess the campus impacts a little bit more, the functions and the future use of the site and adjacent lands as well. And consider the future use of McLaren, which we haven't done yet as part of this process, but that should be something that happens in fairly near future if this is the direction we're heading. And of course, we need to analyze the phasing and implementation of the overall plan, all of which will be presented in a project business proposal to account to approval before any sort of design and construction happens. So based on the Arena Task Force recommendation, staff requests that council direct staff to proceed with an addendum to the strategic priorities fund grant application, confirming that the city wishes to direct the grant towards a new multi-use facility on the SOEC complex, twin surface arena. We also request that council direct staff to proceed with the next phase of work to conclude the financial analysis, develop the funding strategy, and further consult with the community prior to making a final decision on the recommended option.
Thank you, Ms. Kozak. And just for what a council, for comments or direction, the anticipated decision from FCM for the grant, is that this fall or is that next spring?
This fall.
This fall, so. Okay. Let's just have this.
Thank you, Mary Jacoby. I just had a question. The screen that you had up there referencing Memorial being converted to a dry surface and the operating costs of that, not on the screen, but in your language, you said, of course, that costing will be mitigated by the revenues generated. And I realize that there's no way you can put a number there, but I thought it might be advantageous for people who don't always see the whole scope of things to have that comment there on the screen, that while this is the anticipated cost of operation, it's also anticipated revenue will be generated that will help to mitigate that. So I just wondered if you considered that? It just helps to make things a little clearer for people as they are asked for comment. Sure. Do you want me to add that now? Is that what? Well, I would ask if you consider adding it.
Okay, sure. Yep.
Counselor White, thank you. Counselor White? Thank you, Chair. Thank you again for the presentation. Thank you, everybody, for all the hard work you've been into this.